Give a presentation to all of you and we're going to have a question and answer period after the presentation's done. Presentation they're going to gear towards is the questions that were submitted by the five or six supervisors. And what we're going to do there is go through the presentation. After the presentation is fully given and the answer is given to the questions that were asked, then we'll open it up for other questions and that. We have our finance director, Dave Gersting there. Our personnel director, Bob Riedel, who's going to introduce Siegel Waters Consulting. Our two individuals that represent them are here. I'll leave that, give him the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. Thanks a lot for this opportunity to have Siegel Waters present the job that they did for us over the course of about the last 10 months. You have already met Heather Kazemi. Heather is the vice president, who is our consultant, the consultant that our staff worked with as they did the analysis on our jobs and subsequently made the proposals. And the senior vice president is Elliot Susles. Elliot is already started work on our corrections officer project and is here to help present the ins and outs and the answers to your questions of the study. With that, I'm happy to introduce Elliot Susles.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, everyone. We appreciate the questions that were provided to us in advance of this session and it's Heather and my objective to be informative in terms of trying to respond to each of them in a thoughtful manner, given the parameters or limitations of the engagement with the county. And we'll comment on this based upon the question that's being asked. So, the first slide addresses what I'm sure is a question of interest of many of you. And the question, the questions, by the way, we may have paraphrased them from what actually was submitted by email, so if you don't see your exact words, please understand that we did a little bit of wordsmithing, if you will. The first question obviously deals with the issue of compensation for judicial assistants and legal secretaries. And the question is really speaks foundationally to how we came up with our recommendations. Now, the recommendations that we put forth, Heather's talked with you about in an earlier session, are fact-based, they're based on a market study that we conducted. And I thought that the best way to address any concerns that you may have with regard to the issue of the appropriate levels of compensation for these two jobs is to share with you the actual data that was collected upon which we reached our conclusions and recommendations. So, there will be two slides, one for judicial assistance, which you see up on the screen now, and then we'll do legal assistance. And just to take you through these, there's a lot of numbers up there, is important for everyone to understand. With regard to the judicial assistants, we gathered information from 14, what we call comparators, other counties. And what you see there is the name of each county for which we have information, the matching job title, so what they call their respective job, which may be called a judicial assistant or something else. Let me point out that the survey that was distributed, and I'm sure Heather talked about this previously, but to reinforce it, contains summaries of what the duties were about. So, we were not matching on job title, but we were matching on the essential elements of the job. And so, when we gather this information, each of the peer employers that responded took a look at that summary, said, "Do we have a similar job or not? If we do have a similar job, what do we call it?" And that's what the matching job title column is. The column to the right of that is a work week definition, so if there are differences in work week, we wanted to know that. Why? Because paying, you know, $50,000 for a 40-hour work week is different than paying $50,000 for 37.5-hour work week. So, we take that into consideration. And then we gathered information, pardon me, we gathered information with regard to the pay ranges that each of these employers, peer employers have. So, when we talk about pay ranges, we talk about what's the minimum, the entry salary, what's the maximum of the pay range, and we have a statistical midpoint, which is really the average of the minimums and the maxims. And so, we have that information for all the peer employers. You then look below the 14 job matches, you will see something that says "public sector market average." So, we display there the average, the dollar average of all the 14 respondents at the minimum of the pay range, the midpoint of the pay range, and the maximum of the pay range. And those dollar amounts are $40,045, $45,141, and $50,233 respectively, as the averages for the survey peer employers. So, how do we compare that to your pay range? Well, we look at your pay range for the job, which is $39,291 to $49,483, and so we compare those numbers to it. And the percentages that you see is Kenosha County, what Kenosha County's minimum is as a percentage of the market. So, in this case, by example, at the minimum, it would be $39,291 compared to the market average for the minimum of $40,049. And those calculations are the same at the midpoint and the maximum. And I just think it's important for you to understand what this data shows and what the calculations are without belaboring it too much. What does the outcome of that show? It shows that at the minimum, the Kenosha is at 98% of the market, at the midpoint it's 98%, and at the maximum it's 99. So, virtually, if you look across the pay schedule, it is about the average of the market. Now, we have, and I'm sure Heather's talked to you about this before, but just to refresh your recollection, when we define market competitive, between 95% and 105% of the market average. So, if you kind of keep that in your heads when you see these numbers, that's the corridor that defines market competitive. If those percentages were below 95%, we would say you were below market. So, we have in both cases quite a robust dataset of what the market provides. Same type of calculations here. The difference on this slide is that legal secretaries, as you all know, are employed not only in the public sector, but are employed in the private sector as well. That is different from the judiciary assistants, which are unique to court operations. So, here you have two segments of this chart. The top part is very similar to what you just saw in terms of the job matches and dollar amounts by a public employer. And if you compare just the public sector, just the public sector, to average to your pay range for this job, and the pay range for this job is $45,183 to $62,710 in the county, that compares quite favorably to the market average in the public sector of $37,856 to $46,877. So, if you looked at that data alone, you would say, "Oh, my gosh, you know, we're between 119% and 134% of the market for legal secretaries." That's something that one should take note of. But we balance that with the fact that legal secretaries are also employed in the private sector. And certainly, it's reasonable to assume that when you recruit legal secretaries, that you might recruit them from the same pool that law firms might recruit or other entities that have legal secretaries. So, the second part of the chart, the lower part, which is private sector data sources, and as you see there, we have four of them, all very reputable data sources. In fact, one of them, the Kenosha Area Business Alliance, is obviously very proximate geographically to where we are. But that said, the average for the private sector alone is more than the public sector, almost $46,000 at the minimum to $60,000 at the maximum. And in fact, the data, no matter what private sector data source you look at, and if we just look at the midpoint, the middle of the pay range, they are pretty consistent. They're within a few thousand dollars of each other. So, we have pretty reliable data here. Each of those private data sources collects information from many employers. So, that makes it, you know, even more reliable. What we do then is say, "Okay, we have this private sector data, we have the public sector data, how do we blend them together?" We say, "Let's assume the market approach is 50% public sector, 50% private sector." And the bottom line on this chart, which shows Kenosha, Wisconsin, as a percentage of the overall market average, is the position relative to the blend of public and private. And in that case, the legal secretary current pay range is at 108% of the market at the minimum and 117% of the market at the maximum. So, what this information tells us is that if you're looking at legal secretaries compared to the market, overall, they are very well-paid. In fact, by our rule of, this pay range is above market. So, that's the foundational information that we used to evaluate the appropriate salary ranges for judicial assistant and legal secretary. Now, let me just say that there may be some perceptions about there about impact of this. In fact, judicial assistants' pay ranges increase as a result of this, and so, and legal secretaries' pay range actually decreases somewhat as a result of this. So, the idea is bringing these things closer to market. But the recommendations that we have made are fact-based, data-driven recommendations. You have the data, you see it here, and that's the basis for where we go.
So, the second question was, "Does the market study include salary data published by MRA, also known as the Management Association? This organization publishes several compensation surveys, some of which are national, some of which are regional. We did not use their specific sources, but we did use, as Elliot alluded to, the Kenosha Area Business Alliance, which was conducted by MRA, and the data comes from their datasets. It's just published through the Kenosha Area Business Alliance. So, it's a source that was not considered, not brought up, but we do have the Area Business Alliance, which comes from the same organization. They collected the data and is part of their database and datasets."
Thank you. Question three was, "How will the county's market position improve after implementation of the new pay structure?" So, this is a, what I call a macro question, a question of overall. How does that, how does the change in the recommendations of the pay structure affect the county? To remind you, and I know Heather briefed you on this in the past, the survey for the areas of the county that it covered, covered 87 benchmark jobs. There were 18 public entities that were surveyed, plus the private sector data that you just saw on the prior slides. What this shows is the kind of before and after comparison, and we've given you slices of the cake, so you can see public sector, private sector, and overall on the left side. Those are the statistics on your current market position. So, if you compare just right now to the public sector, you're at 94% at the minimum, 97% at the midpoint, and 100% at the maximum. This is again across all benchmark jobs. The private sector, you're actually lagging the private sector in a pretty significant way. 87% at the minimum, 90% at the midpoint, 91% at the maximum. If you look at this overall using our approach of averaging these together, 91% at the minimum, 94% at the midpoint, and 96% at the maximum. So, your minimum and midpoint overall are below market, and your maximum is just barely in that corridor of 95% to 105%. So, that's the diagnosis of the current state. Based on the implementation approach, and we do this comparison side-by-side for the public sector, you get to be at 101%, 104%, and 106% of market at the minimum, midpoint, and maximum respectively. There's a marked improvement in terms of your competitiveness with the private sector. So, you were at 87% at the minimum, now you're at 93. You were at 90% at the midpoint, now you're at 96. And you were 91% of the maximum, you're at 96 as well. Overall, you are spot-on to the market. Again, that corridor, 95% to 105%, you're at 98% at the minimum, 101% at the midpoint, and 102% at the maximum overall. So, that is the before and after picture with regard to the competitiveness of pay by sector.
We thought we'd do this back and forth. So, question number four was, "How was job security taken into consideration when valuing total compensation?" And the answer is, it wasn't. There is, to my understanding, no way to quantify job security. What we were seeking to do was to compare an employer's cost for total compensation for an employee. So, there was no way to factor in whether a job is more secure than another job, whether someone would leave that job, or whether an organization is more prone to layoffs or furloughs. It's not something that we can factor into the cost of an employee or the cost of a job. Also, job security is affected by economic conditions, both in the public sector and the private sector, specifically here within the county. Budgetary considerations affect the certainty of continued employment. That's what affects job security, how well the county is managed, how well the finances are managed, just like with any other organization. But it's not something we can quantify in terms of total compensation.
So, the next question deals with health and the consideration of the health program in terms of the competitiveness of total compensation. And I want to underscore that the survey and the task that we were asked to do was to look at the cost of benefits, as well as obviously direct compensation costs. And so, we did not, nor were we asked to, take into consideration differences in plan design, such as things like deductibles and co-pays, out-of-pocket costs. So, I just want to frame our response in terms of, this is the employer cost, this is in effect what's hitting your budget for your workforce. So, with that parameter, let me kind of take you through this a little bit. We start out with what is the current cost sharing overall for medical and dental. And that cost sharing is 90% employer, 10% employee. How is that composed? On the medical side, the county picks up 95% of the cost, the employee picks up 5% of the cost. But then, the dental is 100% employee-paid, so when you put those two together, you get the 95, 10%. Now, I think embedded in the questions was a follow-up dealing with the vitality program, or what we would generically call the wellness component of the health benefit program. Wellness component, meaning that if people exhibit certain behaviors and so forth, that there are incentives associated with that. If all employees participated at the highest level of the vitality program, it's my understanding that there are multiple levels depending upon how you participate in that program, but if they were at the highest level, the level that would support the greatest level of wellness, that the county's medical and dental programs, instead of the cost share being 90-10, it would be 93-7. So, that it looked, that there's in effect a three percentage point shift in cost, of the share of cost, between the employer and the employee. That really reflects a 99% employer cost and a 1% employer cost on the health side alone, plus the 100% employee fully-paid cost for the dental. So, there's two components here, just want everybody to understand that. So, on the face of it, right, the vitality program says, "We're going to shift cost from the employee to the employer." But the reason you have the vitality program is for people to exhibit better health behaviors, which would presumably, over time, lower your health claims cost. So, the point we make here on the third bullet is that if the program is successful, overall health benefit costs would go down over some period of time, although the county's share of those costs goes up. So, you have costs going down, but a bigger slice of those reduced costs being absorbed by the county. So, I thought that it would be helpful, not only for this question, but for some of the other questions that were provided to us, to really kind of address this notion of total compensation, show you what the slices are, both in the market, in the public sector, private sector, where the county is right now, as well as to address the vitality issue. So, if you bear with me, these are bar charts, 2004 total compensation costs. So, these are costs that are related to the market study that Heather did. And the first bar speaks to the average of the benchmarks that have private sector comparisons. So, obviously, there are some jobs in the county where you wouldn't find people in the private sector doing it. So, I wanted to say, and address the question, how do we compare to the private sector from a total compensation perspective for those jobs that have analogous jobs in the private sector? And so, the first bar starts with what we call base pay, right? And in the private sector, unlike in the public sector, there is frequently variable pay, some sorts of incentives or bonuses. So, we have a slice added on to that of related to bonus or incentives. And then we have health benefit costs and retirement contribution costs. So, these are again all employer costs. So, what is an employer on average for these jobs that have, these benchmark jobs that have analogous jobs in the private sector? And the answer is $96,043. I mean, this comes from our survey data. So, we wanted to compare that to the county for the same set of jobs. So, those jobs that the county has, where you find the same jobs in the private sector. And we looked at it with your baseline health. So, in other words, with health, assuming the 95-5 split of costs pre-vitality program implementation. And the second bar from the left has now three components, base pay, health costs, and retirement. The difference is, in the private sector, there is variable pay. In the public sector, there isn't. So, you're going to see that slice in the private sector bar, missing in the subsequent two bars, because it just doesn't exist. If you look at this, right, total compensation with the baseline health program for the same jobs on average comes to $86,352. So, it is about $9,650 less than the private sector. And that may be of interest to some of you, given, you know, what sometimes are perceptions about the relationship between total compensation, the public sector, and the private sector. We then did the same comparison, assuming the vitality program again at its full implementation. So, that's the third bar from the left. And in that case, the costs go up to $86,951. So, the costs are increasing by about $600 bucks between the baseline health and the vitality program. In either regard, in either regard, there is a substantial gap between the private sector and Kenosha, either with the current baseline or with the vitality program. The three right bars take a look, again, not at the private sector average, but at the overall average. In other words, the combination of public and private data, as I showed you in the earlier slide. In that case, overall, for these jobs, the average is $90,082 in the market. That does have a small slice in there for variable compensation, because it's a combination of both public and private sector. And then we compare that, again, to Kenosha, either with baseline health costs or with the vitality health costs. Baseline is $85,250, so you're about $5,000 below market on average for those jobs, and $85,849 if you would take into consideration the vitality. Now, those costs, this gets a little bit technical, but I did say that the point of wellness is to drive down claims costs. That doesn't happen immediately, that happens over time. So, we're looking at your health costs as they are today, without regard to the fact that the vitality program actually may bring that portion that's labeled health benefit costs down somewhat over time, all other things being equal. So, that's really the comparison, both with respect to the question that was posed on, did we take into consideration vitality or not, as well as a perspective on how do these, how does the county's competitive position look against the private sector or against the total marketplace that we measured, which was both a combination of 18 public employers and the private sector data that you saw in the prior slide. The next question, I think I answered in my preface to the prior question, which is, we did not take into consideration plan design differences. So, we looked at the cost of each employer's plans, employer cost and employee cost, understand the cost sharing. We have the dollar amounts, but we did not, as part of this engagement, examine the impact of differences that might exist in plan designs from one employer to another. To do that, you'd have to look at those 18 plans and understand in fair amount of detail what the nuances are, the details, and how that would change, in effect, out-of-pocket costs to employees.
Moving on to question number seven. There were several questions about implementation of the new pay ranges and how would they work? And how, specifically, how do employees receive pay increases? How do they progress through the pay ranges? The first question was, "Will there be steps in the pay plan?" Steps are a traditional public sector pay schedule approach, where you have an automatic, predictable step increase, and you see it on the pay schedule. That is something that will not exist, or we have recommended a pay plan that does not have automatic steps. What we've recommended is a progression from the minimum to the maximum of the pay range that reflects a 3% pay increase per year, 3% of the midpoint per year, only after receiving a positive annual performance evaluation. So, our recommendation was to move away from the step approach, go to an open salary range approach, and have that, have progression through that pay range tied to the annual performance evaluation. Another question came up about the minimums and the maximums of the pay range. Is the maximum, what we would call in the industry, a hard maximum? That is, can employees be paid any more than the maximum of the range? Our recommendation, what is very typical in our experience in the public sector, is to limit employee salaries to the maximum of that range. So, they would receive no pay adjustments. If an employee is paid at the maximum, they would not receive a pay adjustment until that maximum is increased. So, until you did another market study, for example, and adjusted the pay ranges. Employees who are at the maximum would not progress beyond that. So, question eight is, "Were any jobs with only public sector comparisons found to have below-market pay ranges?" And I think this question came up, it was worded a little differently. And I think this question came up, it was worded a little differently, to say, if you're saying that overall, the current pay ranges are consistent with the public sector market, then why were some jobs experiencing a pay range increase that are only found in the public sector? So naturally, those averages are averages. And we said, on average, the pay ranges are consistent with the public sector. Naturally, there are variations by job title. So we have here a list of the benchmark jobs that are only found in the public sector data sources, that have below-market salary ranges, and they're listed here. I won't read them to you, but there were several. And for those, we did recommend a pay range consistent with the market average, just as we did for every other job. So the next question, I'll hand it over to Dave.
Thanks, Heather. In my earlier analysis and my reports to this board, you heard me say that this plan is sustainable, that this plan works financially. And you each have seen the analysis that I presented. And one thing we didn't take a deep dive into is the actuarial analysis. We had an actuarial analysis done of this plan, a 10-year actuarial analysis that goes from 2015 through 2024. So what we wanted to do was present the multi-year impact of this and go beyond the two years that you saw earlier. So over the 10 years, what the actuaries did was they looked at what would happen with turnover, how would turnover affect the plan, and then they looked at the grist of the plan. They looked at the details of the plan to look to see what would the fiscal impact be. One scenario they looked at was what would happen if the average employee retired after 20 years, age 62? You can see in the report, and I think you each have this report on your desk, that's hard to see up on the chart up there. You can see that, and this is the highest, most conservative estimate, it would be about a 1% increase per year, 8.7%. Now, if we didn't have the retirements, the age 62, 20-year retirement, that number would be about 12%, a little over 12%. So the retirements reduce the total cost from about 12% to about 8%. And the plan design is the thing that causes the increase of about 1% a year, roughly 9%. This chart goes 2016 through 2024. If you said that retirements would occur age 62, 15 years, that drops the increase down almost to nothing. So now, one thing the actuaries didn't take into account was, what about other turnover? What about people that quit, that also would save us money in this plan? That was a difficult thing to analyze, but I think it's fair to include that metric in our discussion. So in this analysis, we're using half a percent to kind of match against the turnover that we get from retirement, knowing that turnover from quits exceeds turnover from retirement, and knowing that the turnover from, the savings from the turnover from retirement is between 3% to 5% per year. So, yeah, 3% to 5%, half a percent a year, 3% to 5% over the 10 years, I'm sorry, 3% to 5% over the 10 years, not 3% to 5% per year. So if we use that half a percent per year, that gets us to almost a flat or nil increase, and it's primarily based on the plan design that the actuaries analyzed. So I think that reinforces the report that we've made to this board, that going forward, this plan is sustainable, and it works financially for us. And I'll turn it over to Bob, I think, for the last page of the PowerPoint presentation.
The question has come up on several occasions about reclassing or appealing the placement of a particular job or class of jobs. And currently, the way that is in place to do that is through the reclassification process. It happens during the budget time, when budgets are submitted. There is a component where you ask for reclassifications, or new jobs, or new job classes, and that gets submitted with the rest of your budget. It comes to me and is researched by me, and I interview the pertinent people. And we now then will add a return to the consultant, so the consultant, too, can take the information, particularly the new information that is submitted by the leadership of your department, and compare it to the baseline that they have established now. And then they will make a recommendation or give an opinion, and then the whole thing goes through the county executive for consideration for placement in his budget. So the way to request a new look, if something is different from what it was when you submitted your original JDQs, if there is a higher level of education or experience needed that has developed over time, that is best done, at the moment, through the classification process. Okay?
And that's it?
All right, thank you for that. Now, we're going to open it up to supervisor questions, and I see supervisor roles, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since the judges are the supervisors of the legal secretaries, and that is by statute, 758.19-h5h, and have never been consulted, whereas other supervisors in county government were consulted, I would like to suggest, Mr. Chairman, that we allow the judges this evening, who are present, to have, react and have some input into this evening's discussion for our own edification and enlightenment, because what I've heard this evening from the consultant is, in our view, inaccurate, that there are many items that they didn't take into account. I left on your desk some of the job duties and responsibilities that were missing and were not taken into account and demoting, and that's what this is, demotion from the, what I thought should be classification six to classification five. So I know that you, what your ruling was on my proposal to have citizen comments, but I think we should hear from the judges this evening. They came, they have opinions, they were never consulted by the consultant, and, Mr. Chairman, I would move to allow them to speak this evening.
That's your opinion. I've already stated my opinion now twice, one verbally and one written to you, and I stand by my decision. Corp counsel has backed me on my decision. There's going to be two other opportunities for public comment that are going to be coming up. This is only for information only, there'll be no voting taking place here tonight. I made that point clear the other night, I made that point clear in written statement, and I'm making it verbally right now.
Mine is motion.
Excuse me, I'm not finished yet. My point is this, this was for information for all you supervisors to make a better judgment on this particular issue, and that's what we're trying to do here. That's the way I see it.
I would so move, Mr. Chairman, that we open it up for input from the judges.
Anybody else having any questions for the consulting group this evening? Supervisor Deck.
I'm sorry, these are going to be out of order, because as I was, as I was, as you guys were speaking, I was writing down questions, so they might not make sense in the... Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, these questions are going to be not in logical order, because they're, as I wrote them down, as I was hearing the discussion. So when you compared the job titles to other counties, did you also compare the job duties?
Yes. As Elliot mentioned, there were job summaries on the market survey document that we sent to the peer employers. We asked them to complete the survey for us, matching based on those job duties that were in the market survey document. For those in the private sector sources, we did the matches ourselves, based on the job summary that was in the documentation.
Okay, thank you. In the question, in the question number three slide, were, if you could pull that up so I can see it, were those percentage numbers, the minimum, the maximum, and the midpoints, were those slides based on wages and benefits, or wages only?
These are based on wages only. This is the minimum of the pay range, the midpoint of the pay range, and the maximum of the pay range, on average, for pay.
Okay, so it was wages only, okay. And then you stated that the study did not take into consideration the deductibles and co-pays for the study. Why didn't you take into consideration the health plan designs?
Well, the short answer of that was that the scope of our engagement was to look at cost, not at plan design.
Okay. There, the plan design makes a big difference on how attractive an employer would be, and it makes a difference on, I mean, having different, lower deductibles and co-pays, or no deductibles and co-pays, does make a difference based on your compensation, correct? Isn't that considered in the private sector?
I think the question that we were asked was, what's the cost of that? So if you design plans with different features, that that is reflected in the cost and the sharing of that cost between the employer and the employee. So from, if you will, a premium standpoint, if you think about it, being in business, you pay a premium. So you'll see differences, all other things being equal, you'll see differences in premiums based on differences in plan features, kind of like auto insurance. It's a thing that we can all kind of relate to, I suspect. So that's in the cost. So when we get the information of what is the cost for, you know, County X, or County Y, or County Z, those costs are reflective of the plan design differences. But getting more granular than that, you know, what is the deductible, what is the co-pays, and so forth, we were not engaged to do that. That is a very expensive study to do, because it requires, we had 18 employers, that would require actuarial valuations of 18 different health plans.
Okay. And then question number seven. I'm just, so there, Seagull Waters recommends no changing of the maximum for each of the classifications, correct?
No, no, if you're asking...
No, if someone hits the maximum or anything, that's as high as they're going to go. There's no wiggle room for adjusting the maximum, that's what Seagull Waters recommends.
That's what we've recommended.
Okay. And then question number nine. Mr. Geertson, do you have the actual dollar amounts of the net effects each year, instead of just the percentages?
At the 1%, it would be about a quarter million. The base is about 20, a little over 20 million in the base year. At the lower amount, the 15 years, it would be nil. And then if you average those and take into account the other turnover, we're estimating it would be about $100,000 a year.
Okay, so that's the dollar amount.
The report that we gave you for 2016 was $140,000. So you got the report we gave previously.
Okay, thank you. In the proposed policy language changes, Mr. Riedel? I noticed, I went through, and I noticed that the new policy takes out under the wages, the wording on page 25, "Any adjustments allowed by this policy will be reported to the Finance Administration Committee at the committee's next scheduled meeting." So, I'm sorry, let me read the entire paragraph, because that'll make more sense. "The county executive is given the authority to respond to market influences which affect hiring and retention by adjusting individual employees' wages within the limits of the job classification wage scale. Any adjustments allowed by this policy will be reported to the Finance Administration Committee at the committee's next scheduled meeting." That last sentence was removed in the updated policy. Is there a reason for that?
There's a couple of other changes, too.
Yeah, and also under the non-classified special assignments, and under the retention stipend, it was also removed.
We're looking for some flexibility on the part of the administration to make quick judgments on retention issues. Let me give you an example. If we had a director, a division director, that had accepted a job, or was contemplating accepting a job somewhere else, we would like some amount of money that we could counteroffer with, without having to go to the board and request it. And so that was the inclusion in the retention language. So not only are we seeking the opportunity to convince somebody to stay if they're contemplating retirement, but to convince somebody to stay if they're contemplating leaving for any other reason, and they were still valuable to the county. So that's the explanation of putting all those things together. In terms of reporting to the board, it just makes it an easier thing, and if the board were to limit the amount of money that the county executive, or the administration, rather, had at its disposal, we were hoping that would satisfy the board in terms of establishing a limit.
Okay, but this doesn't actually say that it needs board approval, it's just that you're, that it would be reported to the board.
No, I think it limits the amount of money that is available to the administration, I think to $100,000, right?
Correct, but it's not saying that we, it needs board approval, it's just saying that, or you're removing the language that the, that it doesn't have to be reported to the board, that any of these changes. So it actually doesn't affect how quickly you guys can act on giving these things.
Asking for the money on the front end, okay? So what we're seeking is a budgetary line item of $100,000 to be used at the discretion of the administration for the purposes outlined in the policy.
Right, and I understand that, but why, why doesn't, why doesn't the administration want to report back to the board what they're doing?
We have no problem reporting back.
Okay.
It's just, the request for the money comes upfront, instead of, instead of reporting at the end.
Right, but there's no reporting, that's, I'm just bringing...
In any other case, it's approved.
Bringing that up.
We don't have any problem.
Okay, because I did notice, in the policy, the policy language changes, it does say step increases are to be reported to the Finance and Administration Committee annually. But in one of the questions, it said there are no step increases, is that correct?
Step increases are 3% of the midpoint.
Wait, no, those are raises, those aren't step increases, or am I incorrect?
They're synonymous, they're the same. Pay raises, in the old system, we had fixed numbers. It was, you know, $19.50, $20, $20.25, and that one. Instead of that, we want ranges, and there are two advantages to that. One is, if someone with significant experience comes to the county looking for work, we would like the opportunity to hire them in between the beginning and midpoint, so that we can match the years of experience. One of the problems we have seen, and one of the reasons we're doing this, is that our starting wages were too low to attract experienced people in particular pockets of county employment. And so that's, that's why we want that range, that variability in the range. The step increase, instead of the fixed number, would simply be 3% of the midpoint, whatever that is.
Okay, so you're using the term step, but Seagull Waters used the term wage, and you're using, you are using those synonymously, even though, or wage increase, raise, wage increase, raise.
Let's call it a wage increase.
Okay, so, okay, so this is not step increase, as in what we used to know as a step increase.
Right, it's a wage increase, and rather than a fixed step, it is 3% of the midpoint of the range.
Okay, so...
Which is, by the way, pretty much standard in the private sector.
Okay, I was just confused, because we used the old language, and Seagull Waters said we aren't giving step increases anymore, and that's what confused me, is because she used a different, different term for it.
I appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Okay, then, let's see. And I don't know if I missed this, because I thought I asked it in my questions, or how long does it take to go from the bottom of a pay scale as step increases? how long does it take to go from the bottom of the, of a pay scale as, as step increases are gone? But raises are in.
From the bottom to the top is about eight to nine years.
Okay, one second, eight to nine years?
Yes.
Okay.
And for exempt employees, it's twelve years, twelve to thirteen.
And when you say exempt, in the, in the public sector, that's salaried, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just, and exempt is twelve years.
Most of our managers are exempt, in fact, all of them.
Okay.
And so they have a longer range.
Okay. Is, is there a reason why in the studies we used counties that had different, you know, like, that weren't as comparable as Kenosha, to Kenosha County as in the population and things like that, you know? Like I saw Outagamy County on there, I believe, was a little, is it, is it, okay, I couldn't read all the other ones. Well, well, but they're-
The comparable counties are ones that we attempt to identify in terms of population, demographics, and then, then regional, because the, the drawing radius for us is clearly Lake County, Racine County, Walworth, portions of Waukesha, and maybe Milwaukee. And so they had to be in the study too, even though they have significantly different profiles, one of the other. Rock County, however, is a valid comparable for us. Brown County is a valid comparable for us because of the demographics of the county. Outagamy just happens to be one of those, even though it's kind of high and outside for a while.
Okay, I, I didn't realize that, thank you.
Right.
All right, and, s- What happens to people who are being paid more than their new, their new classification recommends? And I think, I'm, well, I don't want to state where, like what, 'cause I don't want to get it wrong.
There's, there are several people who are above the top of the range, even the new range. And those folks are red circled. And so they will wait until the range catches up with them before they would get their next raise. However, in, in our proposal for this year, um, we are including a one-time five hundred dollar payment that does not build on the base for those who are in that situation.
Okay, so if they're at the top of their scale or above it, when they're, the annual review process comes, they will not get a raise because they are at the top of the scale or above it?
Correct.
Okay, unless it is, we change the range and the maximum.
The county's intent is to have the ranges reevaluated on an annual basis so that we don't fall behind the market, or we don't accelerate beyond where the market tells us to accelerate. The correction of that will reset the wage ranges and will be presented in the budget. And then if the top of the range exceeds your earning for that year, you would be eligible for an increase either to the top or three percent of the midpoint, whichever is greater.
Okay, so it, if someone's out of their range, they're not gonna be bumped down. They're gonna be able to stay at their pay.
Correct, nobody's taking a pay cut.
Okay, thank you. Let me see if I had any, oh, um. All right, that was already answered. I believe you've answered all my questions. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Noble?
Thank you. Unlike Aaron, I didn't write down the slide numbers. That was a good idea. Should've done that. But I do have some questions. Um, you said that job security wasn't quantifiable. And that was one of my questions. I, I, as I put in my, my thing, my question, the county executive, to his credit, he managed to lead the county through a very difficult economic period without laying off any employees. Surely, there's something, there's some statistics, whether it's surveyed or whether it's, you use a lot of data sources, that shows what the regional impact was of people getting laid off in private and public sector. And the whole question, the whole point of this study is how do we compare to the public and private sector? If we had zero layoffs and it was ten percent, just throw a number out there, in the private sector and maybe whatever percent in the public sector, that's quantifiable. To me, I don't understand how that's not quantifiable.
Are you asking whether there's a number, a dollar number that could be added to total compensation that reflects the value of job security?
Yes.
I, I'm not sure if I understand what you're asking.
That's why I'm saying, yes. If, you could, you could take what I just said without having to repeat it and, and come up with a dollar value, just like you did with the, with your charts there. You came up with a, the comparables, you came up with an average price, and you added on the bonuses and incentives and everything else. You could come up, you could come up in the, in the, with Kenosha County, how, how do we compare? I don't think that, I do know that we didn't lay anybody off, and I think that comple, compares quite favorably.
I can comment, I did a little research on it, and I saw that in 2012, the, there was about a five percent, about a two percent gap between public and private sector unemployment. But the thing you gotta remember is our consultant based the comparables on wages, and those wages would have these factors baked in. So if we went and looked at eighteen counties, it would have the value of, uh, of, of any of these metrics baked in. Same thing with the private sector. So basing our, uh, market study on, uh, actual wages and actual benefits then would include this type of a, a metric. So I think we could say it is included because we looked at both public and private sector and then averaged that.
Well, she said it wasn't.
Oh, I, I, I think the point that's, I think the point that's being made is, um, that if you have an employer that has high turnover relative to another employer, there is something in that total compensation package that's reflective of that, right? So if they have high turnover because their wages are low, what are they gonna have to do? Those of you who are in business, you'd have to raise their wages to attract people to stay to work with you. If you were an employer where people left because they couldn't afford their health insurance, because the employer was saying, we're gonna, you have to pay fifty percent of the cost, people would leave, and to get your talent that you need to run your businesses, you'd have to make some adjustment in how that cost sharing occurs. So I think the point that, that, that has just been made is that, that, in effect, the dynamics of that in the labor market are baked into what people have to pay their folks to get them to stay. Obviously, every employer doesn't like turnover. The only other measure that I have seen done is a measure of looking at what are the turnover costs. So if suddenly you have lots of turnover and you have to replace people in this training period, this cost of training, there are some metrics on training costs attributable to turnover. But what, again, what we did here, just so everybody understands, the, the scope of what we did here was to look at both public sector and private sector, employer cost for what we call direct compensation, what shows up in your paycheck, and employer cost for health benefits, health-related benefits, and employer cost for retirement, related benefits. The fact is that if you remember my bar chart, that the disparity between the private sector and, and here is, you know, is, is, is pretty significant. So there are moving parts here. There are moving parts when you try to do these comparisons. But ju, to quantify job security in that equation is, I, I stand by, I think, what my colleague said, is a difficult thing to do, other than perhaps anecdotally. So you obviously have internally turnover statistics over some period of time. Obviously, and I know this from a work across the country, that while your turnover may be low today because you have a stable economic environment, that doesn't mean that either previously or prospectively things might change, and you might make, have to make uncomfortable decisions. So it's not as if the public sector is, while the public sector is viewed as being more a stable employer than the private sector in terms of longevity of employment, that there's certainly in the recent past history of, of quite, quite a bit of turnover that's occurred because of fiscal reasons. Not to say that the county either is there or wants to go there, but there are, there are what we would call exogenous factors, outside factors, that affect that. And that's difficult, if almost impossible, to measure.
You know, that's, I don't want to belabor the point, but another supervisor gave me this example, and, and I think people measure it all the time. And an example would be if you're, you got a construction job for thirty dollars an hour, which will show up as thirty dollars an hour in your study, but you're laid off a lot, maybe all winter, and you have an opportunity to get a job for twenty-five dollars an hour in the public sector and not, and have the, you know, the security of not being laid off and basically work, you know, fifty-two hours a week, and what if, I mean, forty hours a week, fifty-two hours a year. A lot of people would take that twenty-five dollar an hour job. That's a five dollar an hour difference, and it's not even gonna show up in your, your study. Very simple.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with what you just said. As a matter of fact, I want to make the argument for that, for example, retirement plan, for the public sector, and that retirement can create more stickiness to employment. Whereas in the private sector, they think it's fine contribution plan, where people can take them, one or another, employers, and not tool, use to maintain employment. So I, I don't, I don't disagree in your example. As a matter of fact, I think it's a public sector situation, to precisely your point, where you, you take skilled trades folks and have that volatility because of seasonality or just the nature, simple nature of construction work across the country, and choose to take lower pay, and, and in large part, the stability to avoid, and also because of the, the value of benefits, the value of benefits in private sector on, on the long-term terms will be totally placed for retirement, are, 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 are basically.
Well, I'm glad we agree. Number, I have another question then. I guess I'll, I'll go over to the actuarial analysis. Did the actuarial, and aerial, and, shoot, can't even, actuary analysis, did it take in just wages also?
We, we presented the, the whole plan to the actuaries, you know, we gave them all the data that we had. And, uh, um, so, but the thing that would, so, uh, the pension is a percentage of wages, so that would be impacted. But the health insurance is not a percentage of wages, so that wouldn't have that kind of direct impact. So, uh, if your thinking is that there should be a direct impact between the health insurance and the wage piece, it wouldn't work like that with the actuaries. They, so the health, you know, the, the health insurance would be a separate factor based on what happens with health costs and what happens with plan design. That's, would be a separate analysis, but anything that would be a roll-up off of the wages was taken into consideration. So, uh, you know, that the one percent per annum versus the flat increase would take those into account.
Well, you read my mind in terms of health insurance is what I was thinking. And what I, what you didn't touch on though is if an employee in this next ten years retires at sixty-two, yes, we will hire a new employee at lower wages, but that employee that retired at sixty-two, we're gonna be paying his health insurance for three more years and the new employee's health insurance for those same three years. So I don't think this actuarial analysis took that into consideration.
Oh, it did. So-
It did?
But it's a separate, I mean, the same actuary that did the analysis that we gave you on our OPEB did this analysis. They, they're the ones that actually calculate that. The, the thing you gotta remember is that, uh, uh, we're phasing that benefit out, so-
Not in the next ten years, though.
Well, no, it's anyone, right now, it's phased out for people with, what is it now, twelve or thirteen years, so. So that benefit's being phased out. But, uh, we, we know that, um, you know, as that, uh, we've already calculated the OPEB, we've already given you the OPEB. You already know that number. It's in our audit. So that is a separate calculation that we've done. And they use that same database to calculate the impact on the wages that were part of this plan.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't think the other two questions, or these two questions I asked were addressed. And I believe I asked, or I know I asked, that recently we've had a department head that left county government, and then he came back, he went to the private sector and he came back, and we've had, I know, I know personally there's other employees that have done that. Do we, and it seems to me that's kind of a relevant thing, kind of like that job security question. Did we interview any of these employees to find out if, you know, why they came back to the confines of county government?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. And then, uh, the other question I didn't get an answer for was, because I didn't get an answer, I'll read this entire question. "One of the whereas is in the resolution, it's written, number three, whereas, whereas number three, Kenosha County contracted with Seagull Waters Consulting to conduct a survey of regional employers, compare their compensation packages with Kenosha County's compensation package, and make recommendations to achieve optimal fiscal responsibility, competitiveness for employees within the market." In section eighteen of your presentation, and today you mentioned fourteen or eighteen different public sector employers that you did surveys with, did you do any, it asked that you to do surveys with regional private sectors. Did you do any surveys with regional private sectors?
Well, we included KABA.
I saw that one, that's-
And the reason we selected Seagull Waters as our consultant, the primary reason, is they had the largest repository of private sector information of anyone who bid on our project. And so, uh, what, what happens in the private sector is unlike the public sector, there is no public disclosure laws regarding wages and benefits for their employees. And so they're very protective of that information, and it is only under the promise of complete and total confidentiality that they will release to organizations like those that Seagull Waters has access to. And so the answer to your question is yes. The private sector played a significant role in our, um, in our analysis, or in their analysis, better put. And the, one of the reasons we selected this group is because they had the most comprehensive list of private sector resources.
Okay, I only, as a, as a reader of what I read, I only see KABA recognizable as a regional survey. And apparently, they got, uh, private sectors to respond. That's question number one. And question number two, um, are the, the other ones, they all look national to me. I mean, they certainly don't look regional.
We used regional cuts of national data.
And how regional is regional? Midwest or southeast Wisconsin?
I don't recall on each one of them. That's something we could research and get back to you on.
If it includes-
If that's, if that's important to your decision-making, we can research that. I don't remember right now.
It is mine, 'cause if it includes Chicago, it's totally skewed towards Chicago. And that's not our regional market, that's not, that's not really what we were asking. In my opinion, that's not what we were asking you to do a comparative of, not the Chicago market. So yes, I would like that.
Is that it?
Yes, I'm done.
Thank you. Supervisor Ritzloff, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have a question. Are you, are you health consultants? Are you in that business, or not?
Yes.
Yeah, turn it on.
One second, sorry. Turned off.
Oh, go ahead.
Our firm is, not our practice.
Explain it to me, I mean-
So, so the Seagull Company is a human resources compensation and benefits consultancy. We have twenty-three offices across-
We have 23 offices across the country.
Okay.
I head up and Heather works in our Seagull Waters division. We focus on human resources consulting strictly to public sector employers. But our benefits consulting division is in fact, does both health and retirement.
Okay, so you have, you have people in your organization that look at health and plans quite often, I would think, correct?
That's correct.
At big, small and large companies. Okay, you, you mentioned that, okay, my next question is, in particular question five on the health insurance, what have you done besides something that someone could take five minutes and look at the contribution levels here, I did it in five minutes, and compare it to something else? And you charged us how much for this study? What was, what was the fee for this study that you charged us?
$170,000.
How much?
$170,000.
Okay, could you take a couple of minutes and explain to me what we got for $175,000 besides the fact you did a compensation study? You looked at a bunch of employers' ranges of compensation compared to ours. You looked at our contributions on our health insurance, just what we pay and what employee pays. That's it. That, that's all I see on this. You made no recommend, you made recommendations to add a few more points to our, to the base scale to make that look a little better. You made no health recommendations, you made no retirement recommendations, you didn't compare it to anybody else. You, and, and I know I'm in this business, so I'm extremely disappointed with this, what we got from you guys. Extremely disappointed because you have not left us with what?
Is there a question in there?
Yeah, I want, Mr. Chairman, give me some latitude on this, please. We're talking about a lot of money, okay?
I know, I know what we're doing here.
Okay, thank you.
I called this meeting, so I definitely know what I'm doing here.
I'd like you to justify to us what you did. From a recommendation standpoint, for what we can do in a human resource area with the data we got, because what I see is nothing. I, this health plan is, our health plan is very complicated, it's got a lot of moving parts, I understand that. You made no recommendations, you refused to compare it to other plans. What's that? Okay, my question is, why didn't you compare our health plan to the other company's health plans?
So, so, sir, if I, if I can take on your question straight on?
Sure, go ahead, absolutely.
Okay, first of all, the scope of this project, and I'm sure you were aware of the contract and the scope within the contract, as I assumed it required your approval, included, first of all, a classification study, a job classification study, and that was referred to early on in, in talking about the legal secretaries and so forth, in that every employee was required to complete a questionnaire, a fairly detailed questionnaire with regard to the nature of the work that they performed. So you're looking at a piece of it. What we're talking about tonight is the total compensation, the cost side of the equation. Preceding that was a very extensive study in which all employees participated to provide information on the nature of the work that they did. That information was then used to make recommendations with regard to the classification structure, the job title structure, whether that was properly aligned with the work that people were doing, whether it represented and accurately reflected things like minimum job requirements, education requirements, duties and responsibilities and so forth. So if, if, if you are familiar with the contract that was approved, the scope of that included both that classification and this total compensation study. With regard to the total compensation study, whether it was your desire or not, the contract specifically referred to looking at the employer and employee costs of each of these elements of total compensation. I, I did not write the contract, sir, but that's what we were engaged for.
Okay, and you, next question, you didn't think, I'm going to help, go back to the health side, okay? That cost, the health plan itself wasn't a cost? Where, where would you not think that? The deductibles, the co-pays, the dependent participation, the fact that we're self-funded, our limited co-pays, we're talking about a $20 million budget item to us and you don't think that's a cost issue?
Actually...
You said just the contributions?
Actually, those items of plan design you're referring to are costs to the plan participants if they use the plan. They're not a cost to the employer. The cost to the employer of the plan design is a reflection of claims experience and that claims experience is driven by people's individual behaviors, their illnesses and diseases and so forth. I know the county has a separate consultant that addresses their health plan. We were just not engaged to do that. It's that simple.
Okay.
I understand your wishes, but we were not engaged to do that.
All right, that does clarify something for me, okay. Thank you. That did clarify that for me, okay. I, I have a, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, that's all I got.
You got it?
I'm, I'm...
All right, thank you. Supervisor Skolitsky, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the letter that you had sent out regarding tonight's meeting, you had stated in there that you wanted...
You got to pull the mic, pull...
You wanted to, you urged to keep our questions relevant to this study.
That's correct.
And the look, the, the study looked at the entire compensation package, not just individual things. On the presentation, or the PowerPoint presentation, if you would, the title is Total Compensation Market Study. Page three, it's specifically lists salaries, pay practices, paid leave, health benefits, retirement benefits. Page seven, overall base pay. And page 12 refers to health benefits. There's been multiple references tonight with regards to health benefits. Yet you specifically stated in asking us not to ask or dig into areas of that because apparently it's going to be talked to in the future. However, I'm having a very difficult time...
What was that last part you said? Excuse me, what did you just say? What did you just say?
That it's going to be addressed perhaps in a later time, okay? However, I'm having a difficult time decoupling the cost of health benefits from total compensation or to salaries. So my question is you, are you going to allow health benefits to be discussed tonight?
No, we're not talking about that right now.
All right, so based on...
What was the letter all about? Did you read it?
So based on the county board's rule of procedures, section 2.0, I would like to appeal to the floor to allow us to have a little bit of discussion about the health benefits because it's a significant component of this discussion.
Is there another question in there or...
No.
Okay. Supervisor Rose?
Uh, yes. Why weren't the judges consulted on this legal secretary issue when the statutes provide, and I cited that statute before and I'll do it again, 758.19 subsection 5H, as the supervisors of the secretaries? Why weren't they just, that, you know, that has, that is the issue that has brought, opened up all of the controversy from day one. All of the other questions that have come forward, why weren't they consulted? They are the supervisors of those secretaries.
The job description questionnaires were filled out by the, the employees who worked for the judges. It was reviewed and signed off by the clerk of court and there was an addendum to that signed by all the judges focusing on elements of their job. So that was part of the formula or part of the analysis that was done on the work by the judicial assistants.
They say they weren't consulted. They're here this evening, ask them, Mr. Chairman.
All I can say is I know that there was a written, um, opinion, I believe it dealt with particularly the danger of that particular job, but other elements as well. And it was part of the JDQ that was submitted and analyzed by the, by the consultants.
Well, on everybody's desk, and I gave you one too, Mr. Edel, the missing responsibilities from the job description here. If you look at what the legal secretaries do now, it is much broader than the description of a job from Walworth County or Racine County. As a matter of fact, in Walworth County, they have four people to do the same duties that one person does here. Would you rather have four working for us at a lower salary with the same benefits or would you rather have one? Again, this is such a, this is what opened up this Pandora's Box. Why didn't you consult with them and, and why is it, Mr. Edel, you seem to speak differently than the county executive told me in that meeting in Mr. Kibicki's office when it was clearly agreed that they would be category six, not five? And tonight you take the same position? You're going one way, he's going the other way, or am I incorrect? I know what I heard and Mr. Kibicki heard it as well. Why aren't they six? Why are they being demoted? I mean, that's just a plain fairness question. Why are they being demoted?
Do you want to respond to that? That's fine.
We are presenting what the consultant found in their analysis. That's my only answer.
Well, it was clear to me that in that meeting that I had with the county executive, that I was off, what I was suggesting that they be number seven, the same as paralegals. He said, no, I'll compromise with you at number six. That's what I stated to the committee when I made my first presentation at the first meeting. I didn't hear you back it up. All I really heard you say was, we wouldn't be opposed to that, which is quite different. And it wasn't made clear that the proposal was being amended. So all of these issues that are now being opened up are fair game and I lay it at your feet and you're the one to blame. Because I don't frankly appreciate being double-crossed like that. I'll be blunt with you.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute here. Let's be a little bit more respectful. Double-crossed, please, please. This is Kenosha County Government here. Are you through?
Yes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Poole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask Mr. Edel, you know, how many employees have we lost? Because the administration suggested that this study was due to possible employee losses to the private sector.
I'm not prepared to answer that question, Mr. Poole.
Okay.
I don't know how many retirements or resignations we've had in the past year. I'd be happy to report back on that.
Thank you. And on the language changes there on page two, it says, "An employee transferring to a higher rated job through a job promotion shall earn a wage of not less than 5% increase or the minimum of the new pay range, whichever is greater." I assume that's a change. Can you tell me why that was changed?
It's not a change. Non, non, exempt employees who are promoted get a minimum of 5% if they are, again, if they are promoted.
And for Seagull Waters, speaking about the MRA group, did you say that was a part of the KABA survey or it was not part of any survey?
MRA conducted the KABA survey.
Okay, that answers that. And then why did we have Illinois data included in this study also?
Because they are a significant part of our recruitment market.
Well, I real...
Lake County is a big part of our recruitment market.
I realize that, but Lake County, they also pay a lot more and they're not under Act 10 down there. And was there any adjustment factor to adjust those wages or...
Yes, as I explained the first time I presented to you, there were geographic adjustments to recognize those differences in cost. So for each of the data sources, for example, we received data from Lake County, those data were adjusted to the Kenosha County costs and then counties, other counties in Wisconsin that have lower costs were also adjusted. So every public sector data source that we, excuse me, every, every data source that we received was adjusted geographically to Kenosha County.
Okay, but the Illinois Retirement Municipal Fund, you know, their costs are much higher too, so were those also adjusted?
They, they were not an employer that we included. We did not include salary data from that employer.
No, I mean, the public places there in Illinois, they pay to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund.
Right. We looked at the percent of pay that they contribute to that fund and applied that to the total compensation cost.
If I could just expand on that, so, um, I think this was referred to in the earlier discussion on, on your pension costs. Contributions to a pension plan are determined as a percent of payroll, okay? So we get the percent of payroll, to your point, apply it to the wages there and then adjust those wages for the geographic differences. So by virtue of the math, it does take that into account.
And I would like to say that I like the chart that you had of the legal secretaries, but, which you showed tonight. And, you know, it would help us to understand, I guess, the meat of the study if we were, you know, given all of those calculations where we could review.
Is there a question there or just the statement?
It's a statement of fact, I guess.
Okay. Is that it, sir?
That is all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Poole. Supervisor Gable?
Motion to adjourn.
There's been, there's been a motion to adjourn by Supervisor Gable, a second by Supervisor Rose. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you for coming out to the seat and vote.
You just get me in trouble, you know that.
I get enough to bugger, sir, once I'm out.